All right, Tori, please go ahead.
Okay. Per the State of California Executive Order N-2920, this meeting is being held telephonically. All public comment were received by either email or voicemail as noted in the agenda. Commissioners, you would please mute your microphones till called upon for comment or vote. Now I will let Chairperson White open the meeting.
Okay, we will now call the meeting to order. Let's have the roll call.
Chairperson White?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Present.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
Present.
Commissioner Nixon?
Here.
Commissioner Hamblin?
Present.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Okay, we'll do the pledge to the flag now. So I'll lead that. So, see if you can locate a flag somewhere nearby and put your hand over your heart. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, as we move into the meeting, I wanted to welcome Steve Hamblin to the Planning Commission. I haven't had a chance to meet him, I don't know if the other commissioners have. But Steve, welcome. If you have anything to say, you know, you want to say a few words or just wait until another meeting, go ahead.
No, happy to join the Planning Commission and excited to meet you all in person when we get to that point, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, welcome. Okay. Per the State of California Executive Order N-2920, are there any public comments written or oral?
We did not receive any public comments, thank you.
Okay. The first, the next item on the agenda here, the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 10th. There's a copy of that in the agenda. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review. Are there any comments regarding the minutes? Let's start with Vice Chairperson Christensen.
None.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
No comment.
Commissioner Nixon?
No comment.
Commissioner Hamblin?
No comment.
And I have no comments. So I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 10th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as presented. Commissioner Nixon?
I second it, is this Hollinsworth?
Okay, so now we will take a vote by roll call to approve the minutes. Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Yea.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yep.
Commissioner Hamblin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's a unanimous vote for approval of the minutes from August 10th, 2020. Next item on the agenda, item number three, mural application. To approve the mural application, a day in the vineyard at 123 South Green Street. So I believe Kim is gonna give the staff report on that.
That is correct, thank you everybody. Kim here for Planning Staff. I'm gonna go off of the PDF page numbers of the online version of the agenda. So if you want to scroll down to page six, that is a figure of the proposed mural that's gonna go on the fireplace. So what we have here is a proposal for a mural from Cliff Meredith. This is gonna go on to the Stray Leaves Vineyard at 123 South Green Street. The applicant is simply proposing to put a mural on the street side of an exterior fireplace. Regulations are in the zoning code. I also have in front of me, in section 9.110.040, there's a list of seven criteria for mural design. And this proposal is consistent with all seven of that criteria. Staff, let's see. Project is sequoia exempt and is consistent with the community. So at this time, unless there's any discussion, I'd like to recommend approval of the mural application, a day in the vineyard at 123 South Green Street.
Okay, thank you. Tori, were there any public comments on this item?
We did not receive any public comments, thank you.
Okay. By roll call, we will now, I'll now ask the commissioners for any comments they may have. Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Thank you Chairman White. I do have two. One, are all murals brought before the Planning Commission? I'm a little bit squibby on this, I don't know why I don't know.
Yes, they are.
My thinking is, if it complies with the, if it complies with all of the, you know, the six things that we, they have to comply with, I just don't know why we should slow down the applicant or burden staff. I mean, could this be handled as a discretionary item? If it, if it, if it's literally, it feels to me like this is a rubber stamp because staff has done a great job, the applicant has done a great job. I'm just looking at streamlining in the future.
Sure. Well, we do appreciate the comments. I believe that this process is in place so that you, as the commissioners, have an opportunity to take a look at the actual artwork and verify on behalf of the community that it is the kind of artwork that you do wanna see, even though it checks all the technical standards and boxes of meeting our zoning codes.
Oh, that's perfectly acceptable. I just couldn't, I didn't know the box was free of it. So, thank you very much, Kim. Chairman White, I am done.
Okay, Commissioner Hollinsworth, any comments?
Well, I just had a question and it certainly, the mural is fine. But on the murals, I think I had asked the question. It says that there is a maintenance fee that's charged. Who's actually responsible for maintaining all of the murals? Is the owner responsible for that or does the city maintain those?
You know, I believe, go ahead.
I could probably add a little to that. I'm chairman of the Murals Committee for Main Street to Hatchipie and we started the murals program about 15 years ago. And at that time, the city, we worked with the city to put the ordinance into place so that the Murals Committee would generally be the one to approve the artwork initially and then we would make a recommendation to the city. We also, as a Main Street organization, we put money aside for maintenance of the murals that we produced. However, there have been some other murals that have been produced in the meantime by individuals. And I've worked with Lynn Bennett, she is the artist that is doing this mural. And she called for, she's done some murals for us for Main Street and she does all of our mural repair. And so I contacted Greg and he felt like since the Murals Committee is not as active now as it was under Main Street years ago, that this is something that the city can make a recommendation on under the Murals Ordinance. And there, as far as I know, the individual property owners do not have to set aside money for upkeep. The murals that were done by Main Street, we do have a fund for those and of course, they were much more expensive and of a different quality than some of the other murals such as this one. In fact, we plan in the next couple of weeks to do some repair on the monolith mural. It needs some touch up, so we'll be doing that under Main Street. But as far as being responsible for the upkeep on other murals that individuals paint on their buildings, it'll be up to them as individual property owners to keep up the mural.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay.
Can I add something, Chairperson White? This is awesome. I would just, I think it's an interesting question, we looked at it today. And there's certainly complications associated with the city maintaining murals on private property. We do have a handful of murals on public property. And as Chairperson White pointed out, like this has always been a Main Street thing, really launched this and still to this day stands in the gap to make sure that they're kept in good working order. I think that what you might have found, Commissioner Hollinsworth, in our code is a section relating to a set aside of a maintenance fee along with this mural application. And I think that implies that the city would be maintaining them. So I think in the cases where the applicant wishes to put in a mural on public property, we would exercise that option in order to make sure that the taxpayer is not saddled with that long-term expense. But on private property, I think that's kind of a touchy subject. And so instead, having this application and this permit ultimately granted by you does give us a record, so to speak, so that if the mural falls into disrepair in the coming years, we have a property owner associated with it. Even if Mr. Meredith sells the business, we'll have a property associated with this mural and we'll have a way to address the concern of a dilapidated mural. So that's our thought process and I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nixon, any comments on the mural?
I do. I was wondering if on the mural application itself, that for future murals, we can add a item number seven regarding the maintenance if it is on private property at that time. So they, it would be included in the application process.
That's a good idea, we could do that.
So then the applicant knows upfront that they're gonna be responsible for maintaining it because it's on their property?
Right, right.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Commissioner Hamblin?
Not too much for me, I think it looks like it's a nice mural that ties in with the area. And those are some great questions by others, thank you.
Okay, and as far as my comments go, as I said, I've worked with Lynn Bennett before. She painted the mural that is on the old Masonic Lodge of the blacksmith shop. She's painted a couple of other murals. She also painted, and of course, this mural that we're looking at now is really more of a decorative rather than a historical mural. It will be a little more detailed, she's told me, than it appears here. But the, some of you may recognize that black dog that's in the picture is actually Cliff Meredith's dog and it's part of his logo for his vineyard. So that's where the derivation of this mural comes from. So that was only, the only comment I had. So, let's see. I think now if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the mural application for, it's called a day in the vineyard, I'll entertain the motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Was that Linda?
Yeah, I move that we approve the mural application.
Daryl, second.
Day in the vineyard.
And was there a second?
Daryl, second.
Okay. So now we'll take a vote by roll call. Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Yes.
Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yep.
Hamblin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So let the record show that it was unanimous that the Planning Commission approved the mural application at 123 South Green Street. Okay, we'll move on to item number four. The Architectural Design and Site Plan Review Number 2019-04 for Aspen Supermarket. We will be considering adopting a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Tehachapi approving Architectural Design and Site Plan Number 2019-04 for Aspen Supermarket, subject to the conditions of approval. And here again, I believe Kim is gonna make the staff report.
Yes, thank you very much. If everybody wants to turn to page, I think we're on, you know what? Now my computer's frozen, so it's not changing the page numbers. But under the staff report for Aspen Supermarket, we would be turning to page three of 14. It's a series of photos, it's a collage of photos showing the property back in 2007 and 2012. So if everybody wants to scroll through that, I'll get started. This is an application that came in...
I'm sorry, is that the, oh, no, this is the photos of the debris?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one. So this is the Aspen Supermarket. The applicant put in a submittal to renovate the market sometime last year. So we've been at the staff level reviewing those tenant improvement plans. And as a course of going through those plans, we've discovered in tandem with the Tehachipie Police Department that there have been numerous code violations, some of them that are still open. So the photos on page three are historic photos of what the property has looked like in the past. If you go down to page, two pages later, page five of 14, that's a current photo of what the supermarket looks like today, both inside and outside. And then going back a page, there's a list of miscellaneous building permit issuances, notice of violations, files that I've pulled out from the hard copies. So in summary, what we have in front of us today is an application to renovate or remodel the supermarket. This is on the condition that the applicant works with the police department to pay all of their past due outstanding violations, clean up the site, move forward. And because this is something that has been in the planning department for over the last year, normally, planning staff would recommend two years from approval to get this pulled into plan, or in a building. But because of all the back and forths and wanting to get this site cleaned up, there is a special condition in the conditions of approval that will state that the planning approval is good for 90 days and after 90 days, we have to move this into building. And if we don't, the application will, or the approval will expire and the applicant will have to start over. So going back, because I'm not sure I covered it, it's the, everybody knows where it is, I hope. It's the southern side of Valley Boulevard on the west side of Aspen Drive. It's where Mountain View ends. I am on page, I'm on page six of 14 now in the staff report. Okay, moving on to page seven, there is a figure of the project location. If you move on to page eight of 14, figure six is the site plan. So the applicants aren't proposing to build anything new, they're simply just improving the existing building. If you look closely, there are actually two buildings on site. There's a larger building, which is the Aspen Supermarket. And on the southerly end of the property, there's a smaller convenience store. That convenience store is open now and there's no proposal to change anything. So that convenience store will stay the way it is. Moving on to page nine, figure seven shows you a proposed elevation of the front side and the east side. There is mechanical equipment up on the roof that is going to be screened by a parapet. Looking at the Development Standards Table, the only standard that doesn't meet our code today is the building rear setback. If this building were new and put in today, we would require 20 feet. Because this is an existing building, the existing measurement is only eight feet, eight inches. On page 10, you'll see the elevation of the side and north, north side of the building. The parking, there are 24 parking stalls that are required based on the square footage of the building. There are 26 stalls that are proposed here. So they are adequate in their vehicular parking and there's also bicycle parking out front. Moving on to page 11, the project is outside of the airport compatibility zones, so there's no conflict there. In terms of signage, there's no signage proposed yet, so staff is going to ask the Planning Commission for approval to allow staff to approve that signage when it comes in at a later date. Lighting will also be submitted at a later date. And if you turn to page 12, figure 11 will show you a conceptual landscaping plan. We'll condition the applicant to bring in a final landscape and irrigation plan later and we'll take a look at those details. Moving on to page 13, there is no, there's no fencing proposed and there is no variance proposed. So I would like to recommend at this time that we approve AD and SPR 2019-04, subject to the conditions of approval and to adopt the resolution that includes the conditions of approval in the staff report. And I am available for any questions.
Okay. Before we go to the commissioners, were there any public comments?
No, we did not receive any public comments, thank you.
Okay. Well, let's have comments from the Planning Commissioners now. Vice Chairperson Christensen?
Thank you Chairman White. And Kim, thank you very much for that 90-day thing. I did have a question about that, which ties into a little bit further of a discussion. Is this a new owner and have the PD issue been resolved yet? And if not, I understand this is all put on hold until that happens. But I also didn't wanna see it lagging for, I actually moved to Tehachipie right when this cleanup was done in 2006. So my entire length of time, I've driven by this place. So it would be interesting to know if, how far along that's gone.
Good questions. To answer your first question, on paper, the ownership has changed numerous times over the years. Aaron in Code Enforcement has done some investigation and he's discovered in his paperwork that while the ownership has changed on paper, the applicant may or may not be the same person who might have been a previous owner and subject to the previous code enforcement violations. So we've had, at the staff level, we've had numerous meetings with both the applicant and with the police department. And there, currently, there is a commitment to pay the outstanding fines. There's, I want to say that there's upwards of $50,000 in fines that need to be paid on this property. And the applicant was notified a couple of weeks ago that planning would be putting a hold on the process, on the application, until such time that the applicant worked it out with the police department. We actually sent a notice stating that we would be expiring out the planning application because it wasn't going anywhere. So we referred them over to the police department. Code Enforcement then met with them and they came to an agreement that monthly payments would be made towards the outstanding violations. And then as long as those monthly payments were being made, chief would allow us to go back, get the planning approval done so that they can move forward to building. So because that's kind of a unique thing, we've actually written that into the conditions of approvals. So there are checkpoints along the way for staff to verify that, you know, at building permit issuance, at, you know, final occupancy, at certain checkpoints along the way, we would verify that those payments are still being made and that they're still current. Otherwise, we wouldn't be granting the next approval.
Perfect, thank you for that. I'm glad, sir, I figured as much, but I'm glad staff is really on top of it. The next issue, if we can go back to the elevations on nine of 14 and 10 of 14?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The elevations on page nine of 14 and 10 of 14?
Got it, okay.
I understand that the, it's not parapet, but whatever you call it that wraps around the building. I appreciate staff, I see their stonework in there, I'm sure with staff's recommendation. But across the top there, it says weatherproof perforated metal panel. It's windy, it gets snowy up here. I would, you know, I had to look at it first because, you know, I thought it was just regular lattice work. But if that gets damaged, I don't think that's gonna get repaired pretty quickly. I'm concerned about having that. It's a nice little feature on the outside, but I don't see what it does. And is staff worried about it being damaged with snow and wind and the elements?
That's a good point. I would imagine that it would become a building issue and code issue if it got windy and that blew over and repairs needed to be made. And certainly, we would be on top of that if and when we got to that point. Would it be appropriate for me, or would you like me to ask the applicant to consider an alternative design that may include a more stable architectural feature?
If we get consensus from the commission, the answer is yes. For me, I, it doesn't look, it doesn't feel appealing to me, I'm not sure what it's there for. And it's just a drawing, of course, we don't see it in real life. But when we're done with comments, if the commission would like, I would appreciate that. And then, I got one more thing when you're ready? The last thing, as this goes forward, that is a really goofy intersection, as we all know. It doesn't make a traditional intersection. Is there any way, I know as soon as we do anything with that, there's already people that cut through that parking lot, you know, as they're, you know, they go in that driveway and go through the back of the market there. Is there, should we look at maybe making that, if they're gonna be planting plants across the front, that's gonna stop most of it, but I don't know if that's been thought about or if anybody else cares if that's an issue.
Are you talking about the circulation around the building?
Yeah, just to the, if we look at the aerial view, I have to find it. The aerial view is on staff page seven of 14.
Right, okay. So if you look at, if you go, if you go to the next page, actually, page eight of 14 and figure six in the site plan, you'll see that on the west side of the building, there's an existing alley back there. There was a point in time when staff was going to ask the applicant to pave that alley in order to access the loading docks that are back there. But the applicant has decided instead, they're going to commit to not using the loading docks and to make sure that nobody's driving back through there. If you look at note number 31, it's kinda hard to see, but both ends of the alley, there are bollards put up, so nobody can drive through.
Yeah, I had no idea that was an alley, I just thought that was a unofficial shortcut that Google Maps doesn't know about. But yeah, it clearly said, I missed it on, I missed it on this. So yeah, there's clearly bollards and it does say alley. So thank you very much, staff, answered me. Chairman White, I am done, thank you for indulging me.
Okay, sure, Commissioner Hollinsworth?
I think we addressed most of my questions in this last go-around, but I did just wanna ask a question. That other small building that's there, nothing's gonna be done to that, so that'll just continue to operate?
That is correct.
But they, he owns both?
He owns both, it's one parcel.
Okay. Yeah, my only, one of my questions has been about that alley and you've answered that question already. So, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Nixon?
Thank you, Charles. I have a couple of questions. Since they're closing off the rear access to the building... Um, since they're closing off the rear access to the building, and, um, if that property neck behind them, to the west of them, is ever developed or anything's done there, um, are their deliveries all going to be made in the front and occupy parking spaces?
Yes, that is the plan, and, um, for a smaller retail center, um, that is appropriate because it's, it's temporary and it wouldn't, it, deliveries should be off-hours and shouldn't last that long anyway. Um, if it helps, we can also stick in a condition of approval to mandate where those deliveries are going to be, just to make it explicit and clear?
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful, um, for that to take place.
Okay.
And, and then, um, so with those bollards being put in, they're going to be pretty substantial, um, the fire department and staff has signed off on not having any, any access to the back of that building?
Um, I actually do not know, um, the fire sign-off will happen independently of planning department's sign-off.
Okay, so if that changes, then would they come back to you guys?
They would have to, because the design would change.
Okay, and then my other question is, um, we're not requiring any additional restrooms in this building? And the restroom that is there currently is behind a meat counter and a seafood prep area. How will people, how will the public access for restrooms?
Shall I take this one, Kim?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, Commissioner Nixon, uh, this is a, a whole building tenant improvement, uh, remodel. There's no section of the current building codes that they are protected from. Um, so, uh, the best way I can describe it for you is buildings that are vacant for over one year, in accordance with the California Building Code, uh, no longer have any grandfather right protections. Um, and so for the sake of yourself and anyone who might listen to this, what that means is, is that grandfather protections exist for businesses that might have built something years ago that complied with the codes at that time, and as long as they continuously operate their business, they are not inherently required to make upgrades or changes. Um, but if you're vacant for over one year, um, the law is explicit that you've lost any of those rights, and so when you make an improvement to a building that's been vacant for this long, all codes apply. Um, so, yeah, the restroom path of travel, the restroom count, all of those items will be subject to current code.
Okay, um, and then, is the owner the same as the person that's on the realty sign that has the, that property for sale?
I don't think it's the same name. Um, I've seen that sign, and I don't think it's the same name as what's, um, officially listed as the applicant.
So this property is currently for sale?
It's on LoopNet.
Okay, um, my concern is just the improvements are going to be done to this building, and that little building to the south is a mess. So, I mean, I know that they're not proposing any, um, improvements to that building, but I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on.
Uh, if I might, uh, again, Commissioner Nixon, this is Jay Schlosser, I agree with that statement. Um, as a philosophical point of view, just so you better understa- understand staff's position, this started a couple of years ago, and, and this was a tough one for us. Um, uh, because if you, um, re, they, they are complying with our codes, in our opinion, this plan does, but things like the alleyway or the existing building begun, begin to kind of creep into that gray area, do we apply the codes to that along with the remodeling of a large building or not? I think ideally, both of those items would have been addressed, um, but, uh, staff was also of the opinion that getting something to change out here was a very high priority. Um, and so we, uh, we did spend, about a year ago, um, we, we sat down with the applicant and talked about what we could get done, and that's when we decided to make the recommendation we're making about the alley, as well as, um, as choosing to see the existing building as an existing building that is, uh, protected by that grandfather right, uh, because it's been operable this whole time as a business. Um, so, uh, we do feel like the product is a, is a radical improvement over what we've had there for quite an extensive period of time, and so that's why our recommendation is that we, we approve, uh, this, but obviously, the planning commission is free, if you guys feel like these other items are significant enough in nature to, uh, to suggest a revisit to the design we're presenting tonight, it, absolutely, you guys need to make that decision. So, I hope that helps clarify where we're at.
Yes, thank you Jay. Um, yeah, I have no other comments, Charles.
Okay, thank you.
Um, a lot of my questions were answered, uh, but just to be clear, if this plan proceeds and this building is remodeled, there will be this, uh, grocery store-type new business and a smaller mini-market right next door, is that correct?
That is correct, unless the applicant comes back in with a change of use to change any of the, um, improvement uses or tenant uses in the future.
And, and does this, uh, the owner of the building that we're considering the remodel, does he also operate that smaller store, or is that leased to someone, or do you know?
I actually don't know.
Okay, um, I did have a question, the lot that's for sale just to the west of this property, uh, across the alley, uh, that's owned by the city, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And, uh, what is the zoning on that?
Uh, the zoning is... Hang on a second.
It was probably in the staff report, and I just overlooked it.
It's the same zoning, it's C1.
Okay, and does, uh, the, uh, the, the street just to the, I guess that's the south, Linden Court, does that extend all the way through to that property that the city owns?
It does, that's where the cul-de-sac ends.
So there would be ingress and egress from Linden Court as well as from Valley Boulevard, if, if that's approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so basically, that alley, uh, will, will just be, i- is that, when, when you say alley, does that mean the city owns that alley? Or is it owned by the, uh?
Yeah, that's a, it is, it's a pub, it's public right of way, Commissioner.
Okay, so it will probably, unless the, the, uh, lot that's for sale now gets developed for now, that alley will just probably always be closed, is that right?
That's right, but just to be clear, our, the city's property's not for sale, this gentleman placed his for-sale sign on our property, it's been recently relocated, the city property is not currently for sale.
Okay, because it looks as it, because that's the sign.
Yeah, we had to, that was a recent code issue we had to address.
Okay, and, uh, I, one question I had concerned the date that he purchased the property and, uh, whether or not he was responsible for, uh, clearing up some of those violations, and I understand from what Kim said that the, the, the chain of property ownership isn't exactly clear, so we don't know if this particular owner, uh, has owned the building when there was a lot of the debris there, is that true?
That is true.
And, but it, has it all been pretty much cleared up now? Everything's been removed and, uh, brought up to date except for the, uh, vi- the, the fines, is that right?
Correct, so the property has been cleaned up, um, so what the applicant is doing now is they're just on the hook or responsible for the, um, the bills that the police department is giving them, um, for the abatement of the trash and the weeds and all that stuff.
Do you know when that repayment plan started?
It started this month, and the first payment has been received.
It, it's kind of, uh, given the fact that we don't know the exact, uh, chain of ownership of the property and when things were, uh, cleaned up and when they weren't, I, I, I'd like to give him the benefit of the doubt and say that he's, he's trying to, you know, do what's right as far as cleaning up all of that, and, uh, and I believe it was, uh, um, Commissioner Nixon who brought up the fact about the, the payments being timely, so, uh, and, and Kim, uh, Burrell, you did say that, you know, you'll be following up on that, and I think that's very important that that not slipped through the cracks, because like I said, we, we need to give him the benefit of the doubt that he's trying to do the right thing, but, um, you know, it's also been a problem property, uh, and like, uh, Daryl said, since he's lived here, and it's basically been a problem since I've lived here for twenty years, so I, I, I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, the planning department has taken the stance that it's better to, let's move forward when trying to improve the vast part of the property, even if we don't have any effect over that existing store that's available now, so I, I'm glad to see we're moving forward with at least that part of the, uh, the cleanup.
Uh, may I, Chairperson, uh, White, or?
Here.
Um, I just wanted to add to that, the codes, our zoning code's very specific about, uh, active code enforcement issues, and what it tells us as staff is that we do not permit changes to businesses that have active code enforcement violations, except if the activity being, uh, sought for permit is designed to remedy the code enforcement issue. Um, and so, that's, you've arrived at precisely the conversation and back and forth we've been having with the PD about how to address this issue. We, we feel like since the applicant is put, pushing forward across the table, a correction remedy and a fairly permanent remedy to the code enforcement issues that have dogged this property for years, um, we felt like the right thing to do was to, to move that project forward. However, we've given them a very short leash on purpose, and that's that ninety-day expiration period. Um, you know, we've had many conversations with the PD, um, that if the, if they stop making payments, um, or if they don't actively move from hopefully tonight's approval straight into the architecture work necessary to get a building permit, um, then we're going to expire this approval, and code enforcement will likely then be taking on a far more aggressive stance to address the, uh, code enforcement there. So, hopefully that helps frame for all of you, um, why we made these decisions. Actually feels like the product's pretty good, um, you know, not, some architectural issues notwithstanding, or some side issues, uh, are not ideal in every way, shape, and form, but we feel like this is got maybe the first real chance we've seen in two decades to have this property be nice again.
Yes, I, I agree. Um, I, I did want to make a comment on something that, uh, uh, Daryl Christensen brought up, the, uh, the, the facade around the front, the open, I don't know what you would call it, the metal gridwork. Uh, I, 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 I'm not an architect, uh, not a structural engineer, but it seems to me that it's the opposite of what he, what he thinks. Um, it seems to me that that open work and fret work would allow, um, the wind and, uh, you know, snow to flow through more than a solid panel. It seems to me a solid panel would be more likely to catch the wind and, uh, cause, cause damage, but I, I don't know, I, I, I tend to disagree with, with that, with that statement. Uh, but it, I, as I say, I have no real expertise in that point, it just seems like, uh, it, it would be up to the architect to design something that was structurally, had the structural integrity to withstand our weather.
Chairman White, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, my, my concern at first, it wasn't until the meeting where I actually read, where I was able to, you know, take the time to read that it was, uh, perforated metal. My, my worry, and I'm, I'm happy leaving it, my worries, I thought it was going to be like lattice, you'd go down at Home Depot and buy that flimsy wood stuff, and, and then it breaks, and then you've had an eyesore for a long time now, now we have more of an eyesore, so I, I'm happy either way. Um, i- it, knowing it's metal and, and if nobody else has a concern, I don't either.
Okay, um, quickly, let me poll the others, uh, uh, Hollinsworth, do you have any comments on it?
Charles?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Nixon. Um, did you neglect to ask Commissioner Hamlin if he had questions?
I did, thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
We'll go, we'll go back to him, thank you so much. Sorry, Commissioner Hamlin, uh, you probably do have some questions.
Oh, no problem at all. I, I actually, so the benefit of going last is I can take credit for all the great questions you guys already asked. Um, actually, I did some of the same questions, uh, predominantly around, you know, did a lot of the code violations happen under the current owner, or is this in the past, and I think I'm a little bit more clear on that, or as clear as we can be. Um, and this is a question, I don't know if anybody on the, on the line could actually know the answer to this, but do we know if the current owner has done any, um, other successful renovations or remodels? Does he have experience, uh, doing these kind of things?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
I don't believe I, uh, the answer is no, I do not know if, if he's.
Okay, I, yeah, I figured it was a, it was a bit of a stretch if we knew, but, yeah, I would, I would echo the comments too, I think it's exciting that, uh, you know, it looks like there could be a chance this property could improve, so, um, that's all for me.
Okay, and again, I apologize for skipping over you.
No problem at all.
Okay, um, but, uh, I would like to get, uh, consensus on, um, I, I think it was stated, um, when Daryl brought up the issue of the, uh, screening across the front, that, you know, we, we could, uh, have a consensus on this, and Christensen now, um, is okay with it either way, I, I'm happy with it with the, um, expanded metal mesh. Um, Hollinsworth, do you have any feelings on that?
Um, I am fine with what they are proposing.
Okay, Commissioner Nixon?
I'm fine with the proposal of that.
Commissioner Hamlin?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, maybe we could just make a note to encourage them that the, uh, remind them of the high winds in the area, that, and that it'll hold up to it.
Yeah, okay, uh, is that something you can do, uh, Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, so I don't have any other comments either, uh, so at this point, uh, we will open it to entertain a motion to approve architectural design and site plan review number twenty nineteen dash oh four for the Asman supermarket, subject to the conditions of approval. Is there a motion?
Daryl Lou.
Was that Daryl?
Daryl Lou.
Yes.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Um, this is Commissioner Nixon, I would second it if we can include, um, something regarding deliveries, either times of deliveries or location, or both.
I'll amend my motion to include that, I don't know the exact wording.
I can come up with some language and send it back to you for review if that works.
Okay, but I believe, uh.
Okay.
Uh, we could go ahead and approve it now with a motion, is that right?
Yeah, um, uh, we can approve with the motion with the addition that Commissioner Nixon wants.
Okay.
For the, for the sake of clarity, may I just specify and s- to make sure I'm understanding, so roughly the language would be to, um, add a condition to assure that there's clarity that deliveries will occur through the front of the building and that delivery times will be compatible with the neighborhood that they're in. Does that sound, uh, like what you were after, Commissioner Nixon?
Yes, because it is residential, we have to understand that.
I, I agree, and, and can admit my motion.
I, I have a question. Do we need to include anything to give approval to the, um, planning department to approve the signings? Do we have to add anything in there or is that just assumed if we have passed this?
No, we don't have to add anything for that, I don't think.
Okay.
It, it, that's actually written in as a condition of approval that very way, uh, Commissioner Hollinsworth.
Oh, is it? Okay, I must have missed that, sorry.
As a general note, when it's in the staff report that way, we've already incorporated it into the conditions, assuming that you'll support our decision. So-
Okay, great, thanks.
In a second, we have to discuss, but now we will take a roll call. Vice Chairperson Christensen?
I did not hear anything.
I, I said that we, we, we have the motion, it's been seconded and discussed, uh, so we're taking a roll call. Will you be voting yes and no on this?
Uh, Daryl, aye.
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, uh, let the record show that it was a unanimous vote to approve, to adopt a resolution of the planning commission approving architectural design and site plan review number twenty nineteen dash oh four for the Aspen supermarket, subject to the conditions of approval. Vice Chairperson Christensen, any comments?
Um, the, um, we're, we're in Commissioner comments, right? I'm sorry, for some reason I'm having a hard time hearing you right now.
Oh, yes, that's right. Uh, announcements and reports.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Um, no, uh, the, the only thing I have, um, uh, thank you, I called staff earlier today, um, you know, talking, I, I just had a question about the, um, uh, the new yellow things going across the, uh, the lights up and down Tucker. I, I understand it's a Caltrans thing. Uh, the only thing I'm a little bit disappointed about is at the corner, at the intersection of Tucker and Valley, they did, I would say fifty percent of them. Like, there's one left turn light done, but the, the, the straight isn't done. Another one, there's a straight done but not the left hand. I, I know it's Caltrans. I, is there anything we could, uh, do we know when that project's over or is there anything we can say about it or? I know it's Caltrans.
I'll note, I was along there today and they were still working on it.
Oh, were they? Okay. When, when I came, when I came through about, uh, five o'clock, four thirty, five o'clock, nobody was there, so.
Yeah, I don't know whether they're complete or not, but they were working this afternoon about three.
Okay, I'll be patient. I'll, uh, I'm sure it will be done. That, but that's the only comment I have. Thank you, staff, for all you do behind the scenes.
Okay, Commissioner Hollinsworth, any comments or reports?
No, I have none, thanks.
Commissioner Nixon?
Um, I just have a follow-up from the last meeting. I had, um, asked about the, um, intersection that we had the grant for, for the, um, railway safety. And then the railroad came back and tore them up again. Was that, did we know that was gonna happen or, um, was it something that happened after the fact?
I'd, I'd be happy for any of you guys, if you have questions about capital projects, feel free to contact me or email me. You have that info. For the sake of that follow-up, that was an interesting situation. No, we initially laid it out, um, and we had done that at each of the crossings in an effort to expedite the delivery of the project. In this case, um, the, then the railroad came through and reset their tracks with the new panels. Well, in this particular case, they radically changed the height of the rails when they came through and did their work, uh, thereby nullifying the work that we had done. Um, so that's why you saw the rework occur out there. Uh, that's why we have contingency budgets on our projects. Um, but the plus side was, is that in rebuilding it, it gave us the opportunity to address your other comment, Commissioner Nixon, that wasn't received solely by you, um, to enlarge the radius of that turn. We managed to get a couple extra feet out of it, um, which I know doesn't make it super comfortable, but it is a little larger than it was before. So, um, you know, a couple of coordination issues and, and from time to time that happens.
Okay, well, it is a lot better. We've had truckers comment on the fact that it's, um, much easier to maneuver. So, I appreciate that.
Excellent.
Thank you. But I don't have any other comments. Thank you for all the work y'all do.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hamlin, any comments or anything to report or any questions?
Yeah, just a, a few quick comments. So, uh, again, thank you. I'm excited to be, uh, on the commission here and serve with you guys. Did want to say, uh, thank you to Tori Marsh for swearing me in earlier this week. And a special thanks to Jay and Kim, uh, who spent, uh, well over an hour with me answering all sorts of questions and getting me up to speed. So I appreciate it. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome to the commission. Um, I, I actually didn't have any other comments except, uh, to ask Jay, is there any preview you can give us for the October twenty-sixth meeting?
Uh, well, that's a delicate question. Yeah, we, we only expect to have one item at the meeting. It is, um, well, I suppose I can tell you, 'cause you guys have already seen it as a preliminary development plan. So the address subdivision, we're preparing that for the, uh, final development plan, uh, submission to you all. Um, and so, uh, we're gonna attempt to go back to a, an, uh, in-person meeting. Um, and we've secured the use of the West Park Gym for that purpose and, um, and, you know, hope to have a chance to, to dive into that project and, and, uh, and get y'all's feedback and recommendation to bring to the council for that project.
So we can anticipate seeing, um, the final development plan for it?
Yes, that's exactly correct. We'll be, uh, we will be bringing that development plan, the tentative track map and the, uh, sequoia document for your recommendation to the city council.
The sequoia document, will that be, uh, neg deck or will that be an EIR?
For that project, we prepared a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, so I, I'm just kind of trying to judge how much time it's going to take, you know, to review the documents before the meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll get those in, in as, as much advanced time as possible.
Yeah, I can certainly guarantee the Thursday before the meeting, but, um, but hearing what you're suggesting to me, you're right, there is a bit of material to go through. I'll do what we can here to get it delivered and out to the public a few days earlier than that.
Okay, um, that, that was my only comment. Uh, and so let's move on now to the Development Services Director announcement and report.
I have no report for you tonight, but thank you.
Okay. Well, it is now, uh, six fifty-nine and we will adjourn. Thank you all for attending and we'll, uh, she, uh, we, yeah, we will see you. I started to say we'll see or hear, but we will see you all on the twenty-sixth.
Very good. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.